And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the March 4th County Commission meeting. I'd remind you to silence your cell phones, that the meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Kelly, and that Robert would have listing devices in the front row if you needed it.
Routine business. Item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion, second.
The motion in a second to approve routine agenda. Is there any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of February 25th, 2014.
Move the minutes.
Second.
The motion in a second, any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $496,302.84.
Pay the bills. Second.
Motion in a second, any comments? Commissioner Barth?
Our bills today include $115,000 for Correct Care Solutions.
And that's our last, pretty much our last payment to them. So, one more payment to them and we'll be done. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item four are reports. The Inter-Lakes Community Action Partnership 2013 Annual Report has been received and that is placed on file in the auditor's office. Item five is personnel. A is a motion to approve the personnel actions.
I'll move routine actions.
Motion.
Second.
And a second for routine actions. And Jen, any comments or questions for Jen? Seeing none, all those in favor of routine actions say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item B is to recognize significant employee anniversaries for March 2014. Genetics.
Good morning Commissioners, genetics from Human Resources. Four anniversaries this month. Heather Jaden, who is a juvenile correctional officer at JDC, has five years of service. Also with five years of service is Robert Wilson, who is of course our Assistant Commission Administrative Officer from the Commission Office. Annie Liebengood, who is a caseworker, one with the Human Services Department, has been with us for 10 years. And also Joshua Phillips, who is a deputy sheriff at the Sheriff's Office, also 10 years of service.
You think those right. Robert, you're the only one here, thank you for your service for five years. We hope you stay on.
Item C is to recognize volunteers and county government for February 2014.
For the month of February, again, a great month for volunteers. We had over 250 volunteers who graciously gave their time and service to a number of different departments here with the county, including of course the Sula Heritage Museums, the Public Defender's Office, the Sheriff's Office, Emergency Management, and in the jail. So we just want to thank everyone for their volunteer hours with the county.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
One of those volunteers is here, Virgil Anderson.
Thank you Virgil for your time, and I think you're with Museum, is that correct? Yeah, thank you very much. We appreciate the, you know, 250 people is a lot of people you figure in a month's time that come in and help us, so greatly appreciate that. Thank you Jen.
Thank you.
There are no application for abatement, there are no notice and requests, and there are no planning and zoning notices. The next item is petition for compromise of lien. John Pecus.
Thank you Cindy. This is on DPNO number 58115, in the amount of $4,039.60. The applicant currently is requesting a compromise of the lien. He is a resident currently of the Human Services Center in Yankton. His social worker actually is requesting this for the recipient of the services, and they are asking for a full and complete compromise of the lien. Interestingly enough, the charges associated with this lien actually started in November of 2005, and they accrued through August of 2008 primarily for public defender and poor relief services. According to the application, he is in the process of trying to obtain Social Security benefits. His liabilities exceed just over $4,000 in collection owed to our current collection agency, Haugian Associates. We have spoken with Haugie, and they are supportive of the full compromise, which is very important to remember. The applicant was admitted to the Human Services Center in October of last year. He's continuing to reside at the facility and he's getting treatment for a psychiatric illness. His social worker has requested that there is going to be most likely a release of him in the next couple of weeks due to his improved condition. In preparing for that soon-to-be-release from the Human Services Center, they have to come up with a discharge plan, and part of that is to secure housing. They have been able to secure some subsidized housing here in Sioux Falls that will accept him, however, there are HUD regulations that require that they can't get any sort of HUD or subsidized housing if there are outstanding lien zones. And because of the aid lien from Minnehaw County, that would preclude his admission to the subsidized housing. So with that being the case, we are actually trying to work forward to release this lien so it could get into some post-treatment subsidized housing, which obviously would be allowed in this case if we could get the lien result. Otherwise, he would immediately be discharged and probably be placed into a homeless shelter, which I don't think would probably be conducive to his further continued treatment. So, the fact that, remember, Haugian Associates is in support of this full compromise, so I'm going to make that motion.
Is there a second? We have a motion to approve DPNO 58115.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the DPNO 58115. Is there any comments or questions? Is there anybody who's here to speak in the audience? No. That being said, a motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. All right, Mr. Pecus?
Yeah, thank you Madam Chair. This is on DPNO number 72952, in the amount of $626.40. This particular applicant is requesting a compromise of lien in the amount of $626.40. It is in the name of both he and his ex-wife. He is requesting a compromise of lien with no further payment. The current applicant and his wife were married in February of 1996, they were divorced in December of 2013. The lien includes two billings for public defender services back in 2010. Currently, the application, the applicant indicated that both public defender services were provided in alleged assaults against the applicant from his ex-wife. However, according to the auditor's office, the charges were actually in relationship to representation of their minor child. That inaccuracy could be significant. The family home is currently in foreclosure, and according to the application, the applicant is trying to sell the property to finalize the foreclosure process, and of course, this lien must be resolved prior to the selling of the property. According to the listing agent, if the home sells at or near the asking price, the applicant will receive little if any title proceeds. And of course, his ex-wife quickclaimed her interest in the property back. Currently, the applicant has assets of $2,700 in the value of a 1999 truck, and liabilities of $134,493, which includes the home mortgage loan, as well as debts owed to, of course, Sanford Hospital and collection agencies. The applicant has enclosed a copy of his 2013 tax return. His gross income was $14,439, and he has received a tax return of $4,334. Once again, there is a lien showing that there was about a $200 payment that was made by the applicants, and of course, there is also the judgment and decree of divorce that were included. When I was reviewing the judgment and decree of divorce, interestingly enough, the current applicant agreed to make full payment on the mortgage, and the, of course, lien rests against the mortgage property. However, that is in foreclosure. So regardless, he can't seem to find his ex-wife, she moved to Alaska, and she hasn't made any child support payments. So ultimately, the fact is, he has custody of his minor child, he cannot afford to pay for his house, it is in foreclosure. He has made a small payment, and I guess I would be willing to compromise this lien in the amount of $313.20, which would be half, but I'll see if I even get a second to that particular motion.
Question.
We have a motion and a question. Commissioner Barth?
So what would happen to the other half of the lien?
It would be dropped off the property, otherwise it couldn't refinance.
Okay, would it say personally against the ex-wife then?
No.
Okay.
It'd be completely released.
Thank you.
You know, and the other issue though is that there seems to be some credulity issue related to the fact that the public defender services were for the minor child, and he says it was related to simple assaults, domestic assaults against him. The truth is somewhere in there.
I have a question for the State's Attorney.
Sure, absolutely.
Just wondering, can we, could we make a motion to do a fourth on him and leave the remaining half? If we cut it in half, have him pay 50% of the half and leave the remaining on her, but remove it from the property?
I think you're allowed to do that. And if I may speak to the confusion about which cases this applies to, I did a little investigation of my own, and it appears that there have been three sets of liens imposed on this family. One on both, both Mr. and Mrs.'s in this case. That one has actually been paid in full, and there was a few hundred dollars, I believe, as a balance on that over the years. There's another one which is in the wife's name only, that appears to be some of the criminal matters that he is referring to. And the final one that we're here on today is in both, is in both Mr.'s and Mrs.'s name, but not for criminal matters for the minor child. And I'm only speculating here, but I was a little confused with what was attaching from where and had to go over that too. He might just be confused as to which cases these apply to. As a legal matter, both parents are jointly liable for these because it's an assessment with the juvenile case. On legal grounds, he is responsible, but the compromise is your policy decision here.
So I have a motion on the table for $313.20, which is half. Is there a second? Is there a second? Dies for lack of a second.
I move to deny the request.
I have a motion to deny the request. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion to deny the compromise of lien. I have a motion in a second, any further comments?
Yeah.
Commissioner.
You know, he got through, obviously, through earned income credit or whatever it is, the return of $4,300, and I think out of that, he paid this. This is kind of discombobulated all along, and I see no reason that we should, we need to eat this one.
I have a motion in a second, do you have?
Madam Chair.
Yes. Mr. Barth?
I think I would favor an alternative, which would be to, upon a payment of one quarter of this amount, clear the applicant's name off this lien and leave it all applied to his now ex-wife.
That would be my preference. I have a motion and a second on the table. We'll do a roll call.
And this is for just the denial at this point, correct?
This is just for the denial.
Okay, depending on how this goes, I might add something to add. Thank you.
I have a motion in a second for the denial of DPNO 72952, and we'll do a roll call.
Commissioner Kelly?
No. Oh, yeah, yeah. Yes.
Pecus?
Yes.
Barth?
No.
Hieburger.
No. So now we are two to two.
So, at that point, is it possible to make another motion then?
No, it comes back.
Yeah, you can make, you can make another motion because that motion failed.
Okay, so motion fails, two to two.
I would make a motion to have the applicant pay one quarter of the amount and dismiss him from the lien, leaving the rest of the lien against his now ex-wife.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to, and against the property, to release the, to have the applicant pay one quarter of the amount, somebody wants to figure that out, and apply the rest to the?
Ex-wife.
Ex-wife, and release the property as far as the lien goes.
Yep.
And I have a motion in a second for that. Need a roll call vote on that?
Okay.
Do you have a, oh, excuse me.
And my second was also to specifically release that from the property?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
And just something to add to, max, the three quarters that remains can only remain against the ex-wife, just so we're clear on what that motion does, not the prior amount.
Okay.
Have a substitute motion.
I have a substitute motion.
That we leave the lien intact, but we release it as regards to the house.
With no payment?
No payment, but it stays intact.
Okay, so which one do we have to vote on first? Oh, do I have a second to Dick's, to Commissioner Kelly's? Do I have a second? Dies for a lack of a second. So we're back to the other one, which was the quarter that he pays, release the property and the rest remains on the ex-wife. And I have a motion in a second on that. Any other questions or comments?
I think that was 157.60 with my rough math.
157.60 would be the amount of a quarter of the lien.
Just a point of order, I can divide any number by three faster than the speed of life.
You know why he does that?
Because lawyer gets a third.
Keeping up with this?
Yeah.
I have a motion in a second on the table, I think we'll do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Kelly?
No.
Pecus?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Hieburger?
Yes. Motion passes three to one. Now we can move on. This is the opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to something other than what's on the agenda, this is the opportunity. Good morning.
Yeah, good morning, Andrew Anderson, the Chair of the Sula Heritage Museum Board. Just to give you a quick update, we had a meeting of our Facilities Committee yesterday with the, with the two applicants for being our wheelters for the sale of the property, and it's moving along. We have a decision that we arrived at, will be presented to our full board on Thursday, and the results of our recommendation will come back to you then. We're looking forward to having a expeditious sale of the property so that we can raise the funds to get our center underway.
Thank you. I think we're looking forward to a maximum sale, so.
Right, maximum sale at a expeditious rate. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item?
Nope, nope, I don't think there's anybody else.
The next item is regular business. Item 10 is consider a motion to approve the purchase of metal pipe and bridge materials for the Highway Department from Two North Steel Company competitively bid and awarded by Beadle County, Shannon Schultz.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, thank you and good morning. My name is Shannon Schultz, Highway Senior Project Engineer. This is a fairly routine action because we've done this many times in the past. Beadle County solicits a publicly requested bid for concrete metal pipe, CMP, and we've purchased many times off this Beadle County bid, so we're just seeking to proceed with the appropriate administrative approvals.
Are there any questions for Shannon regarding the bid? I have one. Shannon, which ones are we using, are we using, are we buying all of these, or which specifically ones are we buying?
We have the opportunity to buy all, any of them. We don't typically buy all those sizes. What Beadle County does is solicit prices for all sizes in the event that they might need some or all of them. And so counties like us get to benefit from their publicly bid process, and we can buy off this any size delivered.
Okay. Commissioner Kelly?
Shannon, why, why did you pick to go after theirs? Have you compared the prices with other prices or experience?
Well, they are, it's a very competitive market. There's another vendor over in Minnesota, Albert Lee I believe it is, that cannot meet the requirements because they don't send, they send segments of pipe due to transportation laws in Minnesota are different than transportation laws in South Dakota. And, and what we get from True North Steel is pipe that's already, pipe that's already connected, whereas the one from the Minnesota bidder is not connected, it comes in shorter sticks. So I guess your question is why, Beadle County is kind of the first out of the chute. All of us know that Beadle County does it, True North Steel extends us the price, and it's kind of a happy relationship that we've had with True North Steel for a period of years. I'm not sure that answered your question.
Yeah, it does. I noticed that this is a huron company, so obviously Beadle would just soon see it up there, but if it's competitive, that's all I was concerned about.
Similarly, there'll be a Commission Agenda item before you for the purchase of concrete pipe, RCB reinforced concrete pipe through Hancock, Hancock Concrete Products. That is frankly awarded to Lincoln County, and we'll be purchasing off that bid hopefully in the future as well.
Any other questions for Shannon? I look for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
The motion in a second to approve the purchase of the metal pipes and bridge materials from the Highway Department from North, True North Steel Company competitive bid list. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item, excuse me, item 11 is consider a motion to approve a contract amendment with Short Elliott Hendrickson Incorporated for bridge structural replacement of MC 1450-082-110, approximately three miles north of Hartford, in the amount of $3,975.73. Shannon Schultz.
Good morning again Commissioners. So back in January 21st, the County Commission approved the Final Design Construction Administration Agreement Contract with Short Elliott Hendrickson, also known as SEH, for $88,785. They are requesting an amendment in the amount of $3,975.73 for some additional design that was requested by us, the Highway Department, to investigate a low-water crossing in hopes of perhaps abandoning the road, getting rid of the bridge off of our system. It's a very low maintenance, or low-volume road, and to cut to the quick, the township voted unanimously to keep the road in service. There are some challenges promulgated through the Corps of Engineers about what the minimum sized structure can be, and because it ends up being a fairly large-sized minimal structure that is fairly expensive, the Township Board elected unanimously again to go ahead with the full 10-year storm event bridge opening. So we went kind of full circle to arrive back where we started, but we did have to pay SEH for that service to conduct that analysis to prove that a certain size culvert was needed and would be accepted by the Corps of Engineers. So in essence, this amendment request is for that service to do additional requested design in the amount of $3,975.73, bringing the total amended contract to a total of $92,760.73.
Are there any questions for Shannon?
Make that a motion to approve.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second.
I have a comment.
A question, a comment from Commissioner Kelly.
I understand that we're locked into this deal, it's already money that's already been contracted or spent, but I would hope, this is a road that hardly anybody uses, it's got a six-ton limit on that bridge, is that correct?
Correct, no, yes.
There is one, a couple miles north that, that has like a two-ton?
Three.
Three-ton limit, which makes it marginal for my, for your highway suburban to go over, that isn't going to be repaired this year, and has houses around it and is used. I hope we never get into a situation again where we're repairing a bridge that gets three cars a month on it or something like that, and I'm not going to support this just out of that purpose, but I think it's a waste of $700,000 in my book.
Any other comments? Commissioner Pecus?
Well, we've gone round and round, I believe, with the townships, trying to figure out what is actually a minimum maintenance road, a secondary road, because it really hasn't been defined until Judge Lieberman actually took it upon his own to figure out what it exactly was. And I just want to go on the record for the clarity, the fact that by their decision to go ahead and to maintain this road, there is now something etched in concrete that other people can look to, so this township's on the hook to maintain this road. I just want to say that.
I think the sad thing is, is that the amount of money that will be spent on this bridge is going to probably now be close to $650,000 for a bridge that's only used a couple of times a week or a month, and there are no houses directly on that mile section, but the township felt that it was important that their, people could at least have access along that road. And at this point, we still have money to fix bridges, so we will fix the bridge. There may come a time when we don't have money to put into every bridge that everybody wants, and then it's going to become where the necessity is to replace this bridge. At this point, we can afford it in bridges, that's different than general fund.
I'll say two things. One is we have a fairly robust gridded network, and the townships are reluctant to lose that mobility. And the second thing I'll say is that the township is aware of a parcel that is going to be broken off in the near future to develop a residence north and immediately west of the structure. However, that access will be off a north-south road, not the east-west road, which is bigger resides on. However, that is indicative to them that there will soon be development along this corridor, and so they didn't want to have to take the road out of service and then have the people move in and then have to take, put the road back in service, a reverse abandonment if you will. So that was the discussion with the township.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Barth?
You know, I, I also think that, you know, our county is not going to become less populous unless the weather keeps up. I think that, you know, economic activity is going to increase. Whoever put this bridge in in the beginning knew that there was not a lot of stuff going there at the time, and made an investment in our highway grid. And our road-to-market system in Minnehaw County is one of the reasons why we are prosperous. And I, you know, certainly today, it may not look like the wisest thing, but I believe that as time goes on, that all of these things will become more and more, you know, we have, for example, the cathedral, which was much bigger than they needed whenever they built it. That doesn't seem to be the case at a jail, but anyway, we make investments on things and, and, you know, then we, we gain the benefit, you know. An airport was expensive to build, but we're glad we have it, and I think the day will come where we'll be glad we have this bridge.
Commissioner Kelly?
Well, I go back to what Cindy had indicated, and we got to prioritize, we only have a limited amount of money, and I think our priorities are totally wrong on this bridge. If it's a $700,000 subsidy so somebody can build a house, to me, that's not very good expenditure of money, so.
I have a motion in a second on the table. If there are no other comments, I would move for approval.
Roll call.
Roll call vote please.
Commissioner Kelly?
No.
Pecus?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Hieburger?
Yes, motion passes three to one.
Item 12 is consider a motion to issue the annual St. Patrick's Day proclamation for Ominihaw County. Robert Wilson.
Good morning Commissioners, Robert Wilson to the Commission Office. Yes. Forgive me, I lost my place there. One of the, traditionally, one of the things you do in the first couple of weeks of March is issue the St. Patrick's Day proclamation that we have in front of you now, and then that ties into the annual city St. Patrick's Day parade as well. The proclamation is then typically read by one of, one of our Commissioners at the painting of the shamrock the morning of the St. Patrick's Day parade, which this year will be on the 15th, followed by the parade later, later in the afternoon. So I have for your consideration and reading, if you, if you so choose, the St. Patrick's Day proclamation.
I think, Mr. Wilson, that you should read it. Oh, Wilson.
Absolutely. "From a Midwestern winter, a Gaelic flute trills so clear, calling friends from afar and neighbors quite near. The time has come for O'Hiburgers, O'Pecuses, O'Barths, O'Benigas, and O'Kellys to heed the flute's call and join Grogans and McFarlands, his Irishmen all. No matter your homeland, no matter your place, it's time to put on your grand Celtic face. For at least once a year, the cold gloom must give way to join unity of St. Pat, to join joyous unity of St. Patrick's Day. Here frolic gayety like leprechauns do, bringing laughter and dancing plainly in view. And shamrocks flutter like bees at the hive, helping us feel inspired and alive. The treasure is present, although it's not gold, its giggles of toddlers and stories of old. So now is the time to be lords of the dance, to follow tradition, giving celebration a chance. A chance to be Irish in spirit and name, a chance to be happy that everyone came. Came home to greet friends and child, and old childhood friends, with chalais in hand, walk a road friendly and kind. So shed your troubles by the road on your way, to shout and proclaim it's St. Patrick's Day."
Thank you. That's a little bit different than our normal whereas, 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 so.
That, Madam Chair, that has good old, not Mr. McFarland, but Mr. Grogan's hand to it. He has quite a good ability to write the good limerick, being Irish.
Very nice. I need a motion in a second to approve.
So move to proclaim, to adopt the proclamation.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to issue the annual St. Patrick's Day proclamation with a comment from Commissioner Kelly.
Just a little historical, if you don't remember. I can't remember, this is 27th or 28th, I can't remember what number it is, but back that many years ago, about eight or 10 of us gathered at Sylvia Henkin's kitchen. Sylvia put it together. Sylvia had her drink hanging on her, on her rope and that was a formation, that was done on February 14th, or February 17th, if I remember correctly. And the parade ended up being huge and then every year it got huger. But it's been a, been a great event for this town and all started with Sylvia.
And we will hope the weather improves immensely by next week Saturday.
It always does.
It always does.
I wonder if Commissioner Kelly wrote this.
And it has Grogan's name all over it.
I have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Item 13 is to authorize the chairman to sign a memorandum of understanding between SDSU Extension and Minnehaha County for 4-H Youth Development Program. Robert Wilson.
Commissioners, Robert Wilson in with the commission office. We have in front of you now the memorandum of understanding between Minnehaha County and SDSU 4-H Extension for 4-H services here in, in the county. And what, what you're looking at is an MOU that is really very similar, for all intents and purposes, identical to the previous MOUs you've had, with the exception of an updated budget amount for the, the part-time 4-H youth advisor worker, just to cover some of the high points of the, the extension that SDSU is providing, full salary and benefits for one full-time 4-H youth advisor to work 100% of the time in Minnehaha County. A second part-time 4-H youth advisor will, Minnehaha County will provide half that payment for that, that individual and that payment amount is up to 8627 for 2014. County will also provide office space for the 4-H youth advisors, as well as travel expenses, and then the county will also provide office space for two expanded food and nutrition education program positions. And in addition to that, the, the cost, the cost of this is reflected in the 4-H, in the extension budget, county's extension budget for 2014. You will notice as part of that, that MOU, that the county's portion of the halftime 4-H advisor position is due to SDSU by, by March 1st. That is not, that position is not currently filled, so we will be invoiced once that position has been filled for the remaining portion of the year. If, we would pay the invoice for that full amount moving forward if that employee did not finish out the entire entirety of the year, we would then be reimbursed for that remaining amount after the end of the year.
Any questions for Robert? Robert, do we know if they're in the middle of interviews at this point? Because that position has been vacant for quite some time.
I, I know they are in the process. I don't know if they are to the stage of interviews versus still reviewing, reviewing applications, but I know they are in the process.
I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion. Do we have a second to approve the contract?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the memorandum of understanding between SDSU Extension and Minnehaha County 4-H Youth Development Program. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item 14 is an update and status report of the 89th legislative session on bills that impact Minnehaha County. Robert Wilson.
Thank you again, Robert Wilson to the commission office. And just going over the list of legislation that we've been following the last couple of months, I've got a couple of things that I'm going to highlight here and if you have questions on other bills, please ask me and we'll work through those. First one I just wanted to mention to you was House Bill 1028 and we talked about this early in the session. This is the one that would raise the reimbursement from the DOC to counties for parolees that would, would raise that from $50 a day to $70 a day. That is moving nicely through, through the session. It has now been signed by the speaker. It's waiting the governor's signature, so that, that will be a, a little bump and that, talking to the sheriff's department earlier in the, in the session, that will work out to, based on last year's numbers, would be a little over $16,500. So it's, every little bit helps and we would look forward to that in future years. Last week, a couple of you asked me for a little information about the, the two bank franchise bills that are, that are working their way through the legislature and we're talking to Bob Wilcox with the SDACC and then also the Department of Revenue yesterday. I've got a little bit of a rundown here on each of those. Those are House Bills 1200 and 1201 listed in your memo. And 1200 is an act to revise certain bank franchise tax provisions regarding net income and net operating losses. And this bill is essentially one of a group that the governor's office is calling a red tape review, where they've gone through a number of different statutes and looked at language in the statute that really is outdated or not, not as relevant to, to current practices as, as some other portions. And it was a chance to weed out unneeded language. That's, that's essentially what 1200 is. And that one has passed, the senate passed both the house and the senate at this point, so that one is, is well on the way to likely being enacted. The second bill, House Bill 1201, is an act to revise bank franchise tax apportionment of income provisions. And, and this is really the one that looks like it's going to have the greatest impact on that, that bank franchise tax amount that you receive every year from the Department of Revenue. And the way it was described to me by, by Department of Revenue is that in, in the past and currently, the, the way bank franchise tax amounts are calculated is that at, at the end of the year, on a total, total collections, the banks go back and look to a portion out what portion of a profit was generated in this state, what was, what was generated here, and then based on those internal calculations, then that, those tax amounts are generated. And that was, understand that, that the Department of Revenue was getting, and the state was getting some pushback from some of the larger banks, the multi-state, multinational banks that, that had a, found it difficult to, to apportion that out to each state. And so the, the new calculation or the way that will be figured is by the, the number of customers billing addresses in, in South Dakota. So if, you know, if, if they are looking at a bank that, that I do business with and it's a checking account and a, but the, the bank franchise tax applicable features would be to me with my physical, with my home address in South Dakota. So that is the, that's the change in how that one is going to be calculated. Talking to the Department of Revenue of asking where, what, what's the effect going to be on the, the amount that counties receive from that, they're, said that their, their opinion is that it will stabilize the amount, where over the last three to four years, you've seen some quite substantial fluctuations, that this should be a, bring that under a more level line. Could be somewhat comparable to the most recent payment that you've received, maybe, maybe a slight drop, but, but generally along the line of, of what you, what your, your most recent amount was. And that.
Commissioner Kelly has a question.
Question on that one, I mean, we had a couple of million and a half, $2 million years there. Now what are we looking at, 750, something like that?
Try 350.
It's interesting that it's going to be that or less.
This most recent allocation, and that was for our portion of the bank franchise tax, was just under 1.1 million from this year's, for this distribution. And that, so that was a little bit higher than what we had budgeted for, that we would receive in 2014. And that, that is, you know, you're right. We've seen that bank franchise tax fluctuate from years where we were close to 2.4 million dollars just for the county share, not including the local school districts and the townships and the cities, just our share. And we, of course, saw that plummet down to some pretty horrific numbers in the past few years until this last distribution did, did come back up.
Any other questions about bank franchise? You can move, Commissioner.
Did, was there ever a bill on that coyote reduction stuff that, that was another one of the SDACC's issues? Was there ever a bill on that?
You know, I do not recall seeing, seeing that. You're right, that was one of the three, one of the three resolutions passed by.
We had, we had savings for highway development.
Yes.
Then we had Senate Bill 111 for incremental increases in property tax and then we had, that was our three priorities and so none of them are making it anywhere.
It, it's been, based on the resolutions that approved by the, by the association, it's a tough year.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just want to editorialize for a moment. You know, here we have Medicaid expansion, which would have saved Minnehaha County a million dollars. We had Senate Bill 111 killed off, which would allow us to incrementally raise taxes rather than do gigantic opt-outs. We had nothing on alcohol. You know, to paraphrase Shakespeare, you know, "Our legislature is a tale told by an idiot full of sand and fury, signifying nothing." Thank goodness, you know, that we're taking care of nullification of federal gun laws. Thank goodness that we're not allowing local governments to regulate dog breeds. Thank goodness that they know much more about the problems with texting than any local entity, but why the hell can't they do anything real?
Thank you, Commissioner Barth. Any other comments? Robert, I think you can move on to the next bill.
That, that was the, the end of what I had prepared to talk with you about. I did a quick map before we began this morning and I think we had, we had identified a total of 29 bills that potentially had some, some impact on, on county and, and all but, but 10 of them are, are done now. So we're, we're really down to the, down to the end and the ones, obviously the ones that we were watching with, with the greatest interest went away at least a week or so ago. So we're, we're winding down.
Robert, was there ever anything done with the whiskey plates? I know that had been talked about. The whiskey plates are, you know, that dropped, okay.
Why don't you explain that a little further? I think I have an understanding of it, but I don't think.
It's a law in Minnesota that if you have been convicted of drinking, that your license plate is marked and you have to keep that license plate until your sentence or whatever is withdrawn. It gives a little revenue just because you have to buy the whiskey plate, but then it also designates that those people have been convicted of drunk driving. And so if you happen to be in Minnesota and see a big W on somebody's license plate, you know who to avoid. So that's what it is.
Scarlet letter.
Yeah, so that's what it is. I guess we, oh, one Commissioner, excuse me, Ken McFarland has a comment.
Well, you know, I just want to thank the commissioners who went up there and fought the fight for Senate Bill 111. I mean, Commissioner Barth and Commissioner Hyberger and Commissioner Kelly. I mean, you know, you took the time and you went up there. And it's, it is frustrating. I mean, because you do, when you're talking to the legislators, particularly on the needs of county, you kind of see some of the light bulbs going on and what some of our issues and challenges are, but then when, you know, push comes to shove and that, it just seems like it was a quote, "preordained" decision and not in what to do with the bill. And that, and though I do want to thank, you know, our local legislators who, who asked for information and more detailed information that were on Senate appropriations and that if we did nothing else, I think we did in fact educate some of our local people about the problems that we face. And, and I just would like to remind our local legislators that even though we were not successful this year, our problems are not going away and that in fact, they're just going to be exacerbated as we go down the line. And in fact, I think I sent each of you kind of an FYI email and again, it's just another example of some of the costs that we face. You know, we had a $6,000 interpreter bill because of a special dialect of Swahili that we needed to find and we didn't have anybody local and had to bring the person from out of state in order to provide the interpreter services. You know, the legislator is, legislature is right now changing all sorts of felony and misdemeanor laws and creating new categories of offenses and that, and I would just remind our legislators, every time you do that, it has a cost impact on the county. And that every time you make those tweaks, we're the ones that are responsible for carrying out those tweaks because we're the primary enforcement, law enforcement for the felony and misdemeanor laws of the state of South Dakota. So their decisions have real impact on us and, you know, we want them to remember in the back of their heads every time they do this, that this is a cost that we are asking our partners and county government to bear. And so we just got to keep pushing that message.
Like, help.
Ken, Ken, you got to get to the bottom line. When they make these little tweaks, they have a cost to the county, which they require us to opt out and raise taxes to meet those obligations, which the legislature isn't willing to do. That's the bait and switch that just astounds me. The logical inconsistency.
Commissioner Kelly, did you have a comment?
Yeah, a couple. One is that this is, certainly makes a strong case for open caucuses, I think.
Yeah.
Yep.
And the other is that I think we need to remember, and I believe these are probably national statistics, but 5% of the people drink or buy 50% of the alcohol.
Forty-eight percent.
So if anybody out there is thinking that when we talk about an alcohol tax, we're going after everybody, we're going after the ones that, the ones that are causing the problems. And the occasional drinker is not going to get hurt by this, but we're going to, I think we're persistent in this. Might take a while.
I just would like to extend or challenge all the legislators in the state of South Dakota to go to your local commissioner meetings during budget season and find out what's going on locally. You've got your partners driving all the way to Pierre to spend two days lobbying you on a bill that you don't want to talk about in public, which isn't very fair to us. We would just ask that you would consider coming to our meetings, which for most of you isn't going to be an hour drive. I don't think anybody has to drive an hour in their county to get to their, their county commission meetings and find out what's going on locally.
Maybe Mead County, but yeah.
Madam Chair, I guess to expand on what you and what Commissioner Kelly just said, you know, an open caucus, the reason that we mentioned that and the reason you mentioned about no public debate or whatever, is that the story is that it, the, our bill was killed in private discussion in caucus where we had no input. During our public session, we had a couple of senators that were interested and supportive. We were shocked for a moment when one senator said to Ken that his estimates on, on what the costs of housing our prisoners were wrong. And he said, "I think they're too low." So, I mean, he obviously understood that our costs are incredible in that area and that the numbers we were bringing them were conservative, not, not radical, but for whatever reason, then they went behind closed doors and decided to kill our bill.
Any other comments? Thank you, Robert. Is there any Commissioner Layson reports?
I had an email from Lyndy Young regarding, I believe, Garrettson Ambulance and the ambulance commissioner. And anyway, there's been some questions regarding, I believe, the use of vehicle for their paramedic who essentially provides ALS service up in Garrettson and they-
who essentially provides ALS service up in Garretson, and they wanted a light bar attached to a vehicle so that he could make his way from Brandon up to Garretson if there was an emergency call. We're reviewing the situation, and I'll keep you updated.
Okay. Any other? Commissioner Kelly?
We had a meeting of the HRC, and Robert, you're going to have to help me on this a little bit, but just stop it. Anyway, I forgot to bring the draft of the audit, but Safe Home is doing well. We've got money in the bank, and we were covering our costs up there, and I don't know, is there anything else you want to add about it? Because I forgot to bring the darn draft.
The only thing I would add is not only are you covering your costs up there, but at the end of the last two years, you have the Safe Home LP, the limited partnership, which was the oversight group that was, had to be formed because of the use of tax credits, that limited partnership was able to repay more of the county loan, make large additional payments back to the county to repay the county loan ahead of time, and is a credit to Carol Muller and the human services staff and the staff up there at Safe Home, that because of the way they are managing that, that they are doing very well programmatically and financially, and they're going to, if this continues, they will be able to repay that county loan ahead of time. That's been, they've got two years in a row now of doing that.
And I think we've had great success keeping people off the street and keeping them safe and more sober, if that's a word. But they, a lot better health than they were before, saving us costs in other areas by having them there. It's been, as many bumps and bruises as we had in the beginning of this, it's been a very successful program.
Not, again, not to speak for human services and for Safe Home, but I know they are compiling some statistics right now that I believe they intend to bring you at budget time of some, estimating some actual savings in detox costs, in jail costs of people who are reducing their time in both of those facilities as a result of being in the Safe Home program.
Very good. Any other? Any, Commissioner Barrett?
Last week, there was a fundraiser for the Harland House, and they raised about $27,000. They honored another family that they had helped, and I'll try to get you a link to the video, which talks about their story. They were in a bad way with, you know, payday loans and stuff, and they're straightened out, and it's a married couple and their four children. Additionally, yesterday, we had a meeting of the homeless advisory board, and the Salvation Army is looking at closing down their worming center on March 15th, which, you know, the weather, the way it's been, is pretty tough, but at least they'll be on the street for St. Patrick's Day. But the HAB also sent a letter out to, in support of the Good Shepherd Center's move to that building over on Indiana. And finally, I guess, there's, apparently, contracts are, they're looking for bids on taking care of parolees who will be released. There'll be up to 40 at a time, total 40, like eight a week, and they need to be housed and fed for $250,000 is what the money they have to spend on this, and for years, you know, a year or two years, I'm not sure, but it looks like it's going to be tough to get accomplished at that kind of budget, in my opinion.
Commissioner Kelly?
We also had a meeting in the criminal justice committee, and I'm going to let Robert give just a little synopsis of what we did, because I haven't got the notes in front of me.
Sure. And I'll go into any level of detail that you want at this point, but the plan of the committee is that they met last week to take a look at a draft of a final report that that committee will bring back and present to the commission, decided to rework that draft just a little bit. That's going to include both the Bill Garnos report that you authorized a few months ago to look at inmate population projections over the next 10 to 20 years, and then it's also going to suggest a roadmap of how you go about meeting those needs. And the rework or the work that's going to be following up on that draft is really, in large part, is a recognition of the financial constraints that the county faces, where that on, at first blush, the recommendation of the committee might be a new facility. This is going to be, going to go back and say that, suggest that, as that is an extremely expensive option, that you may look at another option that would include a number of remodels within existing county property, a number of programmatic changes within the sheriff's department, and looking at really every option that you can utilize, that the county can utilize with existing space and with existing personnel to try to meet the needs on at least an interim basis for the next two to three years, understanding the extremely expensive nature of building an entire new facility. I don't know if that, if you want to--
Yeah, thank you, Robert.
--go further than that.
Any other liaison reports? Any new business? Any old business? Seeing none, we would adjourn into executive session for personnel and litigation discussion.
So move for personnel litigation.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Or adjourn.